What is R A?
Right.
That was right. Stacy Grace, Stacy Kate. That's funny.
Okay, so what's the status of Stacy?
Catch what that is.
Is R A Y?
Yeah, R A Y.
Thanks, sir.
Not there for piano, where they open it up with. No, that one.
So they say.
You might as well just get it, get it over with.
I would.
I'm, I'm, it's an echo.
Maybe.
No.
Only one person knows that.
Who's that?
Not you.
Not he too.
Not the United States government.
Absolutely right. So how you did?
Just shortened the phrase still.
Can maybe you got on this actually.
I, I don't really don't think it was me, because what she.
That was a long time ago.
It, it was. We, we were out of quarantine.
Who got, who said, here we go. You get sick, we get sick.
That's what I'm saying. She, she's like, I don't know where I could get us and passing anybody on the street. This is out there. It's gonna happen. When she called me up, she goes, Dad, I don't have a taste for smell. I'm like.
I know.
I said, I don't have a taste for smell. It sucks. I miss food.
Well, I'm concerned.
Water. Everything tastes like water.
You got a dirt taste, you're kind of dirt smelling, you, you smell all the time.
I just smell nothing.
See, I, I think I had that. I just smelled dirt and I couldn't taste nothing, smell anything else. I told my grandson, needed a diaper changer, but he like, oh, he thinks I couldn't smell.
Yeah, I can't smell too bad.
Well, I just don't want to have a surgery in it. I don't want to ever have surgery.
We've got our old hand sweaters on, don't we?
Hey, I like these.
I don't think it's sweaters.
I got my old man sweaters on too.
Hi, Jean. How are you? Nice.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
Good. Turn the second tomorrow, I'll do all of them.
All right, I'm a banker.
Then I'll be back to the saddle again.
He had to bring his horse.
She said, we like.
You put them on your horse?
Uh.
Put them around the sled on your horse?
Oh, Bailey had him hook behind his horse.
With Marion.
Got strings tied to bond hooks, the hook over the back of your spurs, keep the feet in stirrups. Didn't charge him, but now do that.
You know, Marion just had to hit.
He can't slide one way or the other because the spurs will keep him in his truck. He's just like, uh, 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 uh.
How's that boy?
He did. He's getting big.
You finally got one.
I got three of them.
Well, I'm supposed to get some stuff from her today.
I knew you'd be excited when she had that.
Shower chair.
That's your baby, ain't your baby?
Yeah, and I've got my walker, my cane is ready. I'm gonna bring that cane and get the chair.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no. No, they keep, keep from making you.
I was falling.
Yeah, I was outside with my hands in the air for about thirty minutes.
But I, I've got my walker, I've been practicing.
I know Jason, Jason's like.
I'll just sit there with my eyes closed. They was all watching me out the kitchen window and say, yep, there he goes again. Yep, there he goes again.
It's getting funny. I've got a five-year-old that has four made it since I'm leaving to go out of town. I didn't realize I had missed out here to school on Friday, February.
You know, they told me that one.
And she is pretty upset about it. I'm not gonna be here and take her to school Friday.
That's how my kids are. I expect you to take them on a certain day.
I don't wanna know.
This morning, I tell them bye.
I had to get on, I leave and that's what I live on. So I got off the, yeah, so it's just. I'm gonna dump that because I can't. I knew the snow was.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be six feet apart even though we're.
Oh, you did?
Move a mile apart.
Yeah, we, we need to get you, it's gonna have to drive though.
I'm gonna.
Jazz found, she went up there with my old thing. A handful. Really? Yeah, square nails, bug in.
And we pulled up one of those dead trees there. We pulled it up, we got a button, eighteen.
Eighteen fifty-four Dragoon button.
That's pretty freaking cool.
They, they were at the fort between, they were hitting two of eighteen fifty-four. And they were just like. And on button, eagle pulled it in.
If you're in the neighborhood, you should.
It's got some leather, what units are in it, so A for artillery or D for Dragoon, it had a D on there, so.
And barn things.
It was pretty, pretty fun thing. But then Jazz would get out there and she just, she had a handful of square nails.
That's it? That'd be pretty cool.
What was you doing on the road about the trail?
I don't, what'd you say, at eight inches, it goes, it goes back a hundred years.
At Fort Bellmount, to get to the, that eighteen fifty surface of what sort of vertical eighteen fifty, you go down seven inches. So then you have a variance, so it would be between five inches and nine inches. If you find something in there, chances are it's from a soldier or something. Of course, those treatments weren't planted until the nineteen forties, so. But her finding.
Yeah?
Yeah, so when we're finding out that, I mean, it was a handful of square nails. I'm not, I'm curious if something dropped there that left that. She said she was getting a whole bunch more of it. So, and I'm just gonna let her do her thing.
It was so fun. That wouldn't have caught me.
I wonder, I wonder if it wasn't, if it wasn't a, a blacksmith shop right there or something where they.
Well, that's, that's what I thought about, because one of them was actually a horse sheen now. But, um, the blacksmith shop was first east of where that was, this was right outside of one of them, they have various sites, so.
It was exciting though. Oh, would you fund it? Did you make him a copy?
Uh, he's not putting it in the. I said, I'm putting.
Yeah, you have to, I mean, did you send him a copy of mine?
You're ever. Well, this is to be all person, one's already done. Except I'm putting, I'm paying for marketing. I don't know when Linda.
Right.
But that was a good spot. I, I need it. Studying how it's.
I'm closer to you than anybody else.
Well, right.
Exactly. The interest call, and I still don't know what to do.
And some of it, or he worked on it all the time, he looked outside of your time. They ain't paying no, and he were holding on, holding on for us.
That's not hard to do.
You ask, what do you think?
Has he had it on hand?
Use it all. That thing, so.
Your head it too?
Just feel like you're sharing.
That ended up.
Yeah, it did. I will if it comes down to, you know, going to work better or something like that.
You gotta do it.
As far as.
Did I do what you had to do?
She didn't get it. She's gonna get it.
I'm flat for about an hour, just going over that much, it didn't affect just that, it got one fire. Is there a. I had a set for one.
But, um, they were tested and still ten days later when we were during the hospital. It's like David Melissa Lee, who did go in the hospital.
Brian keeps working right there and goes to sleep.
Yeah, he wrote and mixed all those. And so he did it at the moment, because they.
Call meeting order, I'm gonna make notes that. Uh, we are live streaming to YouTube, and if you wish to participate in this meeting or anything, any item thereof that's on the meeting agenda, you may call in at nine four zero two two one two one zero seven. If you desire to observe the meeting, participate via YouTube, if you'll put your browser at county.young dot P X dot U S. Scroll to the bottom of the page, you'll find archive commissioner court minutes, meetings. There should be a tab on there that says live, you click that tab, you should be able to view this meeting. There might be a short delay, thirty seconds or a minute or something like that, between actual expression and what you see on YouTube, but it's virtually live. And before we get completely started, I want to make, make a little statement here. There is an issue that I can't aware of it with weekend that needs addressing before it goes further. Apparently, there has begun a rumor, gossip, small talk, or other term one might call it, that there could be an effort, if you will, to close Fort Bellmount, which could presumably mean closed to the public and abandoned by Young County, and this came to me very, very quickly. One of the church groups in our county that will pray breakfast on Saturday, January the ninth, at the adjournment of the event, an attendee requested prayers for Bellmount. As I understand, when asked regarding specifics of what prayed for regarding Fort Bellmount, uh, was that it did not close its doors and that there wasn't effort to do this thing. This person, when questioned further, indicated they had overheard, I would say, a private conversation at a near table in one of our restaurants, one of our restaurant establishments, and the parties were discussing such issue. I do not know whether it came from the overheard conversation or included afterwards, but my name was specifically attached as the spearhead of that effort. It would appear obvious as such, the intent such for less, for a proper statement, I guess, to be considerate and respectful of falsehood, I'll call it falsehood, uh, would be to incite this public discord, denying and undermining the authority of the commissioner's court and any authority if any I have as county judge and deciding officer of the meetings and possible other orders. All efforts in my lifetime regarding Fort Bellmount including on this commissioner's court has been to preserve, protect, maintain, prepare, improve, and manager the fort buildings, the grounds for the presentation to the public as the greatest historic monument in Young County, and for their appreciation of, of the history of our state, its progress and the fort's relevance in that era of time, most especially the history of Young County and the study of the surrounding area before Young County was created and during the county's development, which is the intent of its restoration. The person or persons putting this falsehood out or that is spreading it around, if they have any integrity or character, they should make a public statement for crafting such falsehood, prepare for this court and me and make their apology. So I'm gonna try to put that rumor to rights. I've done nothing but make all efforts to do that as this court has itself, so. It's very correct, very, very correct. As it came to me, so, now with that, I'm gonna call meeting to order. Meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court is Monday, January the eleventh. It is nine thirty-five A M. Make note that the meeting was posted in the matter before the time required, that all members of the court are present. And if it's convenient, please stand. Make it good, if you will, to give our indication and our, let our.
Let us pray. All right, no problem. So thank you for this day. We ask that you be with this nation under this difficult time and bring us all together as one instead of everybody being separate. We need to be loving and caring and, and know that you are the, you're the person, you're the reason we're here, and we need to serve under you in all of these ridiculous acts that's going on. We ask that you be with us during these times of sickness. We ask that you lay hands on those people that are sick and ask that you, you heal them and do as, as you need, as you see being done. We ask that you be with this nation. We ask that you be with the ones overseas that protect us. Ask that you be with our first responders here in the United States that take care of us on the front lines, nurses, doctors, police, fire, E M S. Take care of them, lay your hands on them and help them heal and, and do the right things. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and righteous flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three, first thing I want to do is, um, give my congratulations to Mr. Vessel. This is the, his first public meeting that he has participated on this side of gathering. So best wishes to Stacey Gressel and his service to Young County. He's gonna be off, I think, soon as the meeting's over, to be become further implicated in the management of county business. All of us have been through that. Please drive safe and careful and come back a wiser and a bigger.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make note that the Junior Lineup Doc Show will begin on Thursday, I believe, and will be taking place over this weekend. There is rules and regulations with regard to this COVID nineteen epidemic, pandemic, I guess you could call it. Uh, but I'm sure online somewhere I have a copy of them in my office. But I know that it's a strain on everybody as we've been trying to manage the risk surge and activity also, as you say, folks can notice this on the courthouse doors and in this courtroom for occupancy measures and for the requirement of masks and social distancing. We've laid the courtroom out a little bit, full of Commissioner Three over here in the reporter's, court reporter's chair to try to observe that six-foot distance during these meetings. Our court will be ran a little bit differently, our criminal court will be, and civil court will be run a little bit differently and it has been in the past. We're under a mandate to do everything that we can possible to have everything on a Zoom setting and exceptions where it's just impossible to make that happen on some occasions. Next item down is receivable delo tax from Wildcat, forty-five hundred twelve dollars and forty-nine cents for the November, uh, November of twenty twenty reported. And we've got a transcript for continuing education tax that the Blackwood, that she lacks up to have, reported in the minutes. She has got it here. And then we have noticed that there's a public, there's a public notice regarding Regional Water Planning Group Area B Wednesday, uh, January the thirteenth. At ten A M. that'll be in which all calls, the notice I think is in there, Area B, it takes in the very north part of our county. Like the city of Albany and some very limited portions of our northern part of County, along with Planning Group B. Another item here will be the COVID nineteen report, and this is as of Saturday, January the ninth, two thousand one. There have been ten thousand and eight tests performed by Young County facilities. Seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine of them have been tested negative. Two thousand two hundred and forty-seven have been tested positive. There are thirty-two tests outending. The total active positives that's been tested in Young County facilities is two hundred eighty-nine. Young County active positives as of that date, January the ninth, stood at two hundred thirty. There's two hundred and eighty residents that are in isolation. Nine people were being hospitalized. There have been one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight recoveries, and we still stand at twenty deaths that are related to COVID. That's all I have on these items. Is there anybody else here, any of the commissioners that wanna make a statement or give a notice of the meeting to some public interest?
That candidate for him tomorrow night, for District sixty-eight. And it rings nine o'clock.
Yeah.
What time? Um, in six o'clock.
I was just saying.
Early voting began today on that. There's five candidates in that race for House District sixty-eight. There's the county judge at Cook County, two members from, two people from Jack County, that would be David Spiller and John Berry. There's one candidate from Childress, don't recall his name, just exactly.
One from Montague.
Who?
One from Montague.
One, hell, yeah, Montague, would be Craig Carter. He's, Craig Carter, then candidate for, uh, he was a candidate for District thirty-one. And he was also, I think, a candidate for House District sixty-eight in our passing primary, so. For the forum, Young County Arena, what time, twenty, six, six o'clock tomorrow? That'll be the fourth thing of January, Young County Arena, six o'clock being twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve, tomorrow, twelve. Is there anything else? Is, is there anything more to put that out here that might stand up, might make a comment about something happening or something of interest to Young County? If not, we'll move on to item number four. And that would be, consider county clerks mentioned in previous meeting, uh, December the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty. Are there any additions, solutions, or corrections?
Still moving.
And the motion of Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve these amendments as presented, all in favor? Be imposed, thanks for the debate. Item number five, big credit for the court. Financial support, but based on security claims, like we have security claims that are making there. Looks like we've got ample access.
Still moving.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Wiley, approve it. Commissioner Wiley on the motion, Commissioner Wood on the second, to approve such a credit or fine for recording, based on the security claims, all in favor? Item number six is considered auditors of public events and vouchers payable.
I have, I have vouchers.
Robert.
A total of vouchers today is sixty-two thousand four twenty-one thirty-three, and out of the general is fifty-five thousand six twenty-nine twenty-four, and there is no non-fee.
Fifty-five thousand?
Uh, fifty-five thousand six twenty-nine twenty-four.
Okay, what was, what, sixty-two thousand?
Yes, sir, sixty-two thousand four twenty-one thirty-three.
Okay.
Still moving. Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
Most by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner, on the truth to approve voucher payable as presented by our auditor on paper. Five o. And we have managed to discuss the appointment of Young County auditor, left the third, what night, Cheryl?
That occurred on Monday the fourth, I believe.
Yeah, okay. Our auditor has been reappointed, uh, by our district judge for an additional term. I believe that's a two-year term.
Yes, sir.
And was there anything in that order, Cheryl, that we might make a place attention to or?
Now, just the basic order.
I'll be with such orders as, um, more submitted with regarding to the appointment of the auditor, might be.
Still moving.
That's according to eight four oh one local government code. Commissioner Wiley on the motion.
Second.
Mr. Gressel. On the second, all in favor? And now, this is approved.
I mean, of course.
As discussed, consider item over renewal, Alliance for Community Solutions. We've had this on, we held this up a little bit. I have visited with Joe Aitken, who is principal of that organization, I guess you'd say, Alliance for Community Solutions. After discussing with him and the cause of our, that we have already budgeted that, um, recommend that we stay with that at least till our next budget planning and then look at that one more time. I'll put that as a motion. Do you have a second? Ross Rogers? All in favor? Item number seven, the discussed, consider employee bonds. There are good many of them there right now. The bond that are to be approved by Commissioner Court, the bond of Sheriff C. Roberts, Young County Auditor at five thousand. Clifford Lawton Blackstock, Young County Constable Precinct Three, fifteen hundred. Christina Centers, Tax Assessor Collector. Two bonds on this, Ms. Centers, on the tax, tax assessor collector, one fifty thousand dollar bond to the county and a one hundred thousand dollar bond to the state, state of Texas, to the Palm Grove. But those, both of those actually be approved by Commissioner Court. Robert Travis Babcock, Young County Sheriff, at five thousand dollars. Tommy Martin, Young County Constable Precinct One, fifteen hundred dollars, and Christopher Dean Baron, Young County Attorney, at twenty-five hundred dollars. Those are to be approved by the, um, Commissioner Scoret. There is, um, two commissioners, Stacy O. Crescent, Commissioner Precinct One, at his first official meeting of the year, at three thousand dollars, and Stacy Rogers, Young County Commissioner Precinct Three, at three thousand dollars, and congratulations on reelection there, new election year. Those are to be approved by the county judge, and obviously I've done that by my signature, I believe, for any bond, so. I think all the rest of these, second, approved, but they've been signed, but we need a motion to officially approve those.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt? All in favor of the approval of those bonds as whiskey? Five votes. Item number eight. Consider extension agent December report, request reimbursement, that would be, um, Kenny Baron at forty-six dollars, and Slidaway in two hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Second, then. I did, Stacy. Motion on, um, Rogers, who's second?
Second, Stacy, Stacy.
All in favor of those, um, reports and reimbursement says requested? Item number nine is to ratify a corrected tax sale deed, the discom, Brandon Purdue, Phil Collins, and Mark, uh, on, uh, I guess that twelve oh one address, be twelve oh one. Stacy?
Gamrin.
Huh?
Gamrin.
Where?
Gamrin.
What?
Gamrin.
Gamrin.
Gamrin. Gamrin, all in Texas. I think we had this, I remember having this last time when we approved his first time, had the same problem there.
I'll move the most.
Okay.
I'll say, I'll say, Ken.
Wiley? All in favor of ratifying corrected, um, tax resale deed for two oh one, Warren Street, all in Texas, all in favor? Item number ten is discuss activity, December application report for the jail pass sheriff office, or on the sheriff's badge.
Looking at, we got fifty-five in there this morning. Sixty-five? Fifty-five. Fifty-five. It has slowed down. It has slowed down. Didn't speak to it. Of course, the T D C was pretty good last month. Good, you're right. Well, we don't have a lot to talk about here, and I have new questions. And we're set.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Pretty busy on the crow side last month. We had, uh, twenty-four arrests. Twenty-five livestock complaints.
Same cat.
Some of them the same old as yet.
Black.
Some of them a lot of bulls. Or had cookout.
Yeah.
Maybe those are put in line.
Yeah.
And we, uh, three deployments of canines, leaving two res with, uh, only nine grams of marijuana. Which is not bad.
Seven point seven grams is bad.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Had a lot of traffic stops. But children's, at least, were, was still over town. Yeah, well, there was, uh, a lot of not getting out either, so. But I guess by the holidays.
I don't know. My eye has it.
The day is kind of low for him, that.
Yeah, he usually might think that pretty hard.
Yeah.
New Virginia, so that's good.
That's right. That's real good. Do I have any questions on that?
He's good, counselor. He's good.
Right, you have all, you have all your officers on board, anything like that, that we have any on?
I have one, is in, uh, homesick with COVID. Home dispatcher, one dispatcher with COVID. So. Anyway, that so far is, hopefully he will stay, well.
Nick, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
You got everything running smoothly?
As smooth as it can be, Your Honor.
Good, very good.
Thank you.
Item number eleven. Discuss, consider, uh, not spoke, James Lane Air Condition, plumbing for, uh, E V O border replacement, that'd be for the equipment lighter. I don't know if they include, obviously wouldn't include something that was unforeseen there, but, um, I don't expect any of much. We have that. Quote, because it was in the last package, the table layout for this, so we could get a more itemized figure. That'd be, um, sixty-three forty-two on border unit. And that is a cascade. We have three of those identical E V O, kind of cascade setting down here that have to communicate with one another. Fire device and technical, that we stayed with that same unit for availability to communicate one with the other. I guess some of us thought maybe that was a little pricey on the E V O unit, but nevertheless, they do us good work and they service us real well, so what's I for?
Make a little, a little, a little.
Yep.
Thank you.
Wiley, Commissioner Wiley on the motion. Commissioner Pruitt on the second. To, um, approve. Approve the, um, quote for replacement of E V O border and installation thereof. For James Lane Plumbing and Cannibal for nine thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. All in favor?
Since we didn't budget for that, we want to move money out of contingency into that line of paper there.
Yes, ma'am.
What do we have in that mic? What else might?
I don't have it with me. I'd have to look, but, I mean, I may not need it right now, but it sure would run them short since we didn't budget that nine thousand dollars.
That's all, we blew it in the motion, we'll take that from, I can think of some.
Yes, sir.
Item number twelve. Discuss, consider, uh, appointment or reappointment, Young County Historical Commission. There's a list there that was provided, Susan Smith, who is a co-chair of that, uh, commission. Other twenty, like I counted twenty-six members there. Uh, the code, uh, that, um, have the code number there, but in local government code, it's required that there are seven members from Young County to create a commission on that. There's obviously been more than seven on that, uh, commission that are approved, have been approved members or most of them there. I don't think there's any due sum there.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Because because of where I work at, is it a conflict of interest for me to be on that?
I wouldn't think so.
Because they've asked me in maintenance, but not about that.
No, I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't think there'd be any conflict here. Okay. I'll make that form of motion that we approve the list of, uh, Young County Historical Commission members.
Thank you.
Well, myself on the, uh, motion, second by Commissioner Pruitt, to approve the appointment of the Historical Commission Committee English. All in favor?
And, uh.
Any opposed? Okay, item number thirteen, discuss, consider purchase of two thousand twenty Dodge four fifty flatbed truck through the buy board. Partial financing through, um, First National Bank, Kristoff Falls. On the range, Kristoff Falls, Mr. Jimmy Wiley, Chris.
Yes, I'm replacing the nineteen ninety-nine model with this.
I'll have a lot of it.
Yeah, yeah, nine nine one.
Did we already sell it?
Yeah, we already sold it.
Has that been sold?
Yes, we've been sold.
Through God deals?
Yeah, through God deals.
I think this will last as long as that will be good.
Okay, I guess we'll have this kind of like, we've got a motion, but Commissioner Wiley, is there a second there?
Second.
To approve purchase. For one four fifty flatbed through a buy board, I would partial financing through First National Bank, so I'll have to come to their contract, I suppose, and come back right by that.
Yes, I guess, I, I can, but I'll get it to you after court.
Y'all in favor? Five votes. Item number fourteen is discuss, consider, uh, no opposition or opposition to sale of property by city ground, even for a bid lower than the appraised value or judgments against, uh, property. I think that would conclude it in your package. Obviously, I don't think that we will have any opposition to that, uh, from what we would. We're loving the property.
The city wants property wherever they are.
Is, um, Brandon, do you want to say anything about that?
Uh, I'd rather address it, uh, didn't know if it was going to be on there or not, but anyway, where these properties are at, there was about six that were presented back to us. They did not sell to the sheriff's sale over the years. Uh, and I mean, basically, the city's been appointed as executor of these particular properties. Um, I'm trying to think where they are. Do you guys have a list of the addresses?
Seventeen oh two Family Lane and two oh four Second Street.
What? What'd I guess it did? About one, one zero zero one fourth street?
There's one on Fourth Street where the building fell in, uh, the wind blew the ball down, and we pushed the rest of it in and hauled it off. That's one on Fourth Street. There's one on the con down from J and N that has a structure on it that we'll be tearing down. Um, and I believe maybe there's another one on Indiana. Does that sound right? There was about six. One of the, the one on Family Lane is, is really an odd shaped one. There's two on Family Lane. One's a very odd shaped one that's not even buildable, uh, in terms of a lot size. We pulled it off. We're gonna, we're gonna go approach those three landowners and see if we can get, figure out a way that they might want to break that property up and purchase it for fair market value. The other one across the road actually gives us, um, so we didn't put it on for sale either. It gives us access to Salt Creek and across if we were to ever want to put a bridge in there, because our sewer plant's right there as opposed to a two-mile gravel road. Um, but there was one on Indiana, one on Con, one on Fourth. You said there's one on Second too?
Is there two oh four?
Two oh four.
Two oh four Second. Um, I'm trying to think of that one. There, there was another property on there too that we wanted to, um, work with, uh, Habitat for Humanity. Basically, these are properties that have gone through the entire process. Nobody even wanted them at the sheriff's sale. Um, and we're, we're trying to get them disposed of so we can get them back on the tax roll, which benefits us all.
I'm sure we've noted out the measure, but.
The one on Second Street, I think, is the one that y'all want to put a bridge in there.
No, it's a Family Lane property.
Family Lane?
So I'll make a motion. No opposition?
Let's check.
Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wiley? We, uh, that motion is for no opposition to the sale of that property or, or the acquisition of that property, I guess it would be, to the that motion is for no opposition to the sale of that property or, or the acquisition of that property, I guess it would be, to the city of Graham. Those properties listed in this letter. All in favor? Case number fifteen is discuss, consider area of crisis center electric bill Kathy Archer.
She's here.
I'm timing.
You were.
Didn't hear me squeak or nothing. Good morning. I walked in just in time, June. Thank you so much. Um, so the Crisis Center has purchased a new shelter. I think most of you. We moved in and actually have breaking news. We have our first resident and three children moving in this morning. That's what I've been dealing with in the awesome. Um, we wanted to ask the commissioners to consider paying the electric bill at our new facility. It is well insulated. I think we've talked about that before. It's been spray foam, all of that. The bill will probably be around a hundred and twenty or so a month is what the average has been.
Kathy, what, uh, who is the provider?
Right now, it's Zero Energy.
Zero.
Zero.
I don't know. I probably think that the court could do something with regard to that and to take on the entire electric bill, so to speak. Maybe we might discuss putting some funding behind that on monthly basis or maybe even an annual.
Okay.
Maybe on an annual basis or whatever was the fourth place here.
It'll be a hundred and twenty every twelve. Not much over the year. We'll get on to two thousand.
As, as you're considering that, I also have another thing to tie in. I'd sent a letter last month, I believe, about the expenditure of that ten thousand dollars, and there was a, a credit still of like nineteen hundred. And I need to know if you want that back or would you like me to apply that this year if that's what you're considering or? But we already have nineteen hundred dollars of your money. I like to let people know these things.
So y'all don't have any summer data on electric bill during the summer yet?
Um, it's been occupied.
It's been occupied.
It's been living.
This much?
Yes, yes, that's the average.
Um, do you take them residence anywhere?
Anywhere, yes.
Show the nineteen hundred.
How long do they stay?
Our hope is no more than a month right now, but hopefully will be more than a day or two unless that's what they.
So it could be from a few days to.
Absolutely.
Longer than a month.
To a longer than a month.
Then you, how many residents can you?
We have three bedrooms that will only sleep up to a family of five.
Three bedrooms?
So this woman moving in today, three children, that's one room.
So it is strictly for, um, single mothers?
Women, abandoned or abused women and their children.
Nobody old father.
Nobody.
I would make the motion that we take the used money that we had left over in that to pay for the year and give us an average and hope we'll know what a year's worth is so we'll know if we look at it in our budget session. We look at it in the budget session and go from there.
Okay. Second motion. Why are you bringing that up?
Yes, being transparent.
I promised you I would be.
I'll do this.
And I'll do it.
Sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that's two. Utilize the remaining funds from.
From the ten thousand.
Not recent.
Yes. Yes.
Repair. And reconsider budget. Next budget.
When is that? So I'll be prepared.
I would probably start somewhere around my. But what that tells me is, is that they take money and they're being very conservative on their spending.
And that's, that's, that's a good.
And we used, um, house of, hands of mercy for almost all the work up there, so, which is a win-win for us all in county.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Wiley and second by Commissioner Rogers to utilize the remaining funds from the repair of the former Crisis Center to fund the electric bill and, and the new Graham Crisis Center and then to reconsider this item that our next budget developed. Second by Commissioner Rogers. All in favor? Okay, you got the electric bill for this.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for all you're working doing.
You've been.
You made a great marriage and everything. It's great.
Whenever you formally abandon this building, it might be those keys.
I will, yes, sir. I have a, we still have a lady who has some groceries in there waiting to get her refrigerator hooked up. Long story. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Very good. Case number sixteen is discuss, consider mint plans for two thousand twenty-one crawfish and cannon fort bail night. Just a late approval.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here.
Okay. I think I sent that to y'all in email. That's been there every day. Yeah, it's, if that a budget suite with regards to the crawfish and cannons event and the expected ticket sales and returns of all that, Chris, explain that to the city.
Sure. So, um, last, last time I was here, we talked a little bit about, um, how occupancy taxes to use, what use of it, et cetera. But I think what I failed to bring up is why we collect occupancy tax in the first place. Um, tourism, which is driven through occupancy tax, obviously, uh, but that's a way to promote our local economy. So our businesses benefit. One in every eleven jobs is dependent on tourism. The economic impact is significant. And so I just wanted to bring that up for starters because I felt like maybe that was kind of a missing link in some of our previous conversations. That the reason we're doing this, the reason we collect occupancy tax, the reason we use occupancy tax to drive more tourism is to impact our local economy, help our local businesses succeed, um, job creation, employment type, excuse me, and quality of black residents. So, um, they all work hand in hand, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there versatile foremost. And I brought an article because I thought you guys might, might find it interesting. But this is just about. I've not heard of the. I've not heard the, uh. I've not heard the rumor that you mentioned, so this. Sorry. Uh, I've not heard the rumor that you mentioned, so this article has absolutely nothing to do with any of that gossip floating around. But, um, it just goes over some of the economic impact of, um, Fort Concho and what it's done for their community and how beneficial it's been. Um, and I just wanted you all to see that because I don't want to ever forget to address that why first before we talk about the what and the how. Um, so what I've prepared for you is the safety and security plan for crawfish and cannons in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, this, this event was already approved at the, when we approved the annual agreement with the CDB. So it's not, um, you know, I don't, I don't think, or at least I hope that we're not going back to revisit or restructure that original approved plan. This is just about how we now execute that. And I think we've prepared a really solid event plan. Um, the total expenses for that event are coming out to forty-three thousand dollars. What we are contributing from the, excuse me, that, um, annual amount from the county is two or three thousand dollars. So, uh, the CDB is taking on the rest of those expenditures, um, to make this event happen because we do believe that it is excellent for Young County. We've also been able to work with Alney and, and hoping to work with Newcastle as well so that they can be more active and involved. The Alney Chamber actually is, um, partnering with us. We've added their logo to our sponsorship packages, et cetera. So we're excited to work with them on this. And I think it's a great way for our entire county to work together. After a pretty long year and seeing some of our businesses really go through some struggles, this is a way that we can empower them and equip them to succeed as a county altogether. Um, so what I'm asking today is to review that safety and security plan. Um, I know that the conversation at the last commissioner's court meeting was really centered around wear and tear of the fort. Um, but that I don't think has to do with the safety and security plan. Um, obviously, we are, are setting up officers. We've worked with the sheriff, with leash chief, techs dot, EMS, and the ER director here in town, fire department, um, to make sure that we are thinking through anything that could happen. Um, we want to be prepared for that, of course. Um, we don't foresee that, but, um, I also included, sorry to flip over past that article, it's a little spreadsheet and I know I'm not comparing apples to apples. So this is just a spreadsheet of the economic impact of the Alamo Road in San Antonio. And then I'd use a percentage just to show you population wise what that would look like for Young County. Just to kind of give you an idea. So, um, the Alamo has over seventy thousand visitors per day on average. Um, and of course, that comes with some wear and tear, I mean, naturally. But that much of it traffic is going to have, um, some form of wear and tear. But when you look at those numbers and see the economic impact, you see that, um, it's for a reason. There's a why behind it. So, um, I think it's worth, you know, getting that grass to grow back or fixing that scratch or whatever it may be because of what this does to help our local businesses succeed in the county.
Excellent. For approval of these plans and the protocol for safety purposes, we're looking forward to it. Would that be it? Also included in this is ISQ to provide us with a cannon firing schedule. Of which he did. I guess everybody got that. Eight thirty, eight forty-five, nine, eleven thirty, twelve fifty-five, one fifty-five, three fifteen, I think, for four o'clock ending on the event.
Correct, yes, sir. We, we, we will have everything wrapped up by four o'clock since ours and residents is.
The, the three fifteen on there, that's kind of the ending, um, whenever that last group gets. Each cannon shot represents the start of something else at the, the first period, I believe, or starting the race. Um, the eleven thirty starts feeding everybody. Um, and then the rest of them are like another whatever we've got going on, um, whether it be music or, um, games or. Cause I don't get one full section that's just for kids. Uh, they'll kind of, so the, the last one would be whenever the signal, hey, we're done, go home. So.
Go, yeah. In that way, we don't want any, you know, loud, anything loud going on past four p.m. I think that's completely reasonable timeframe. It's a day event, family fun. That's what it's intended to be. That's what we're, that's what we're after.
So you and Dr. Martin are kind of working hand in hand on all this stuff?
Yes, sir.
I see that. I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you're saying too. It does help our economy. Our little mom pause tours here, people coming in and visiting them and, you know, I think it's definitely a plus for our, for me and our town or family.
Yes, sir. And on the pandemic plans I've presented or, or since you've judged, you know, and you and I have a phone conversation about this, but I think that should be a living document, if you will. I would say, obviously, say in touch with Dr. Martin, update is necessary. But, you know, if I had written that a few months ago, I wouldn't have known to include face masks or if I, you know, so I think there are just still so much, there's still so much evolving on that that I would rather kind of treat that as a living document. You and I can go back and forth to make sure we're agreeing on that.
Well, my recent decisions with regard to this COVID like they're as changed. Um, obviously, we'd have to be certain of that, but. That's such an activity that, um, about the only thing that could happen would be recommendations that we sure wish you'd follow these rules and regulations because it's a, uh, it would be a really a difficult environment to, um, make those absolute requirements. So, uh, you know, I don't see any reason why, why we shouldn't approve the plan and allow they could put into it.
And we're living in such a day by day situation right now. I think tomorrow it could be something else, so. Two months, who knows what it's going to be, you know, so.
Exactly.
Let it all air.
I've learned that my crystal ball does not work.
Well, not right now.
We'll, we'll stay in contact as time moves on toward.
I'll make a motion when we go ahead and approve this, uh, event plan. Has it written?
I'll second that.
Say that they go, everybody is on.
Any of them.
Four kids.
Wouldn't have.
I'll tell you, last, last meeting, one of my concerns was security. I had a conversation with the sheriff and, uh, maybe even, uh, PD out there. Today, we got a cop here, everybody here, basically two hundred fifty dollars for security. Is any of that going back to these people or is that?
No, sir.
It's going to be split up between, in fact, we're going to have two, I believe, from Alney PD out there as well.
Okay. I didn't know if that's some kind of special security you're going to bring in for everybody in or something.
No, that's specifically, yeah, that's specifically for, um, our officers. And, and we actually, I, I think I included this in my email to you, but we increased that line item.
You did.
This recently, so.
Okay, because I figured somebody is going to be over time, maybe PD.
Crazy.
He, he felt good about it as the plan.
They have like fourteen, fifteen going to be out there.
Yeah.
We have more cops in here?
Has he?
I'd be in over four o'clock and hanging out all night long.
Yes, yeah, that's, you know, that's not the kind of event we want this to be.
Can I?
You?
Um, I, when it comes to the foreground itself, my intent is to limit the amount of people that are in the museum at one time, um, just because, uh, when you have more, like, when you have schoolwork coming there, it becomes chaotic for me myself, and I've got a lot of kids. So the whole thing is to keep a limit on there, make sure everybody's got masks. I don't have masks there that they don't have. They can put on white pants and the guys are on and stuff, but to limit the amount of.
Like ten people?
Yeah, ten or fifteen people at the most, um, in there. If that, I mean, that gives a. When you go around and you look at the museum, um, unless they have questions, you know, it's a twenty-five, thirty minute, um, tour. So, um, I'm sure we can, and of course, if, we've also got a section, like I said, that, um, because I do have five kids, that's very important for them with this big family thing. So we've got, we're going to do historical toys and games and stuff like that with a little history group and, um, kind of a, I don't want to say a babysit area, but that's kind of that, but it'll be within eye shot of the parents and stuff like that for kids going, who have games, little toys and stuff, and they can buy as well. Just on the, the living or the history side of it.
We have, we have motion by Commissioner Wiley. By Commissioner Pruitt. To approve the plans, protocols, and security, um, that is presented by. that is presented by President Cruz for the Algean Hammond for the crawfish and cannons and, um, good night loving run event, uh, to be scheduled, that is scheduled at Fort Bel Air, April.
Yes, April tenth.
Okay, call it favor? I know. So those plans are approved. You can get that out.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
The entertainment.
Do that today.
I will get a snippet.
Oh, oh, I know. Wait, you're gonna be excited about it. It's gonna be good. Yeah, that's true.
It's gonna be Judge Bullock's man?
I think Judge Bullock will like the band. We can have him play a special song for Judge Bullock.
Let me do, yeah, I've, I've done that out there before, but I, I never have charged that kind of fee.
So you could have made money.
Now you know, you've been underpriced.
Maybe put the quality in there or thing. Okay. Item number seventeen, discuss, consider, Young County Commissioners Court Order to set the term of court. This is something that we do, I believe, in January of each year. And we set the term in court accordingly. I think it's February, March, and April, May, June, and July, August, September, and October, November, December, January. And that's criminal and civil court. That's not commissioners court. I want you to get those confused.
Some move with that.
As of.
I think you're gonna get to picture.
I guess on that order.
Eleventh of January.
What? I'll second it. Yeah, Article five, section twenty-nine, Texas Constitution, section twenty-six oh oh two, Texas Governor Code. Yeah, there's the terms. A motion by Commissioner Wiley. Is that right?
Yes.
Seven. Crystal. Okay, to set the terms of court accordingly. Term one, February, March, and April. Term two, May, June, and July. Term three, August, September, October, and term four, November, December, and January. And that, uh, will be pursuant to our criminal and civil court matters and probate, uh, probation, civil matters, criminal, civil matters. All in favor?
No.
Okay, item number eighteen, burn restriction. I think we'll do that today.
We'll do some moisture.
Um, I don't know. I had a pretty good snowfall at my place. It was accumulating. As I checked, it was like eight, three tenths of an inch of moisture. So I don't know if that's gonna be per for inches of snow probably. Kind of makes it appear it never fell much, it came below thirty-two degrees. So it was all melting away pretty quickly and rapidly. I know the moisture's good to the ground, but it sure does make it sloppy. We'll put a thankful jang and we'll be wishing for that moisture back to you, sir. Is there any action necessary on time or anything?
No.
Yes, we'll have a break. Now, I think it's close, sir.
So I've never been, I've never been to county commission and went back to the, to the museum eventually.
How are you, man?
I'm good.
Who's the last to go? Swear by you.
You're the keeper of all the family buildings.
Because I'm like, this is the first time I actually knew what we had to do. What do you owe your budget?
You're the lady for the Jews. Marcia's got three logins in there.
Unless you got going on. You're finally struck. How come you're finally through? Oh, so this thing, you does go. Okay, okay, that's good to know. Uh, now, when they're talking about bonds, is that insuring people?
Yeah, anytime we have, that's insurance.
Okay.
And if you'll notice, the county, of course, down here, she has a million. You gotta hunt down all the state.
Yeah.
Keep it down until the Monday.
Okay. Well, there's just three, so that's why.
We don't have any more.
Okay.
He'll trust us. We're full size, okay?
Well, I.
I brought, I brought my max one.
No, 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 I'm good. Cause I, whenever I got in the truck and I go, and I'm like, man, I need something to write down with it. I have this.
Both foot syndrome, he's scared of that if he gains it.
Yeah, our road, yeah, yeah.
You Apex people who are watching, uh, will have your link sent pretty in the next ten or fifteen minutes to enter that Zoom setting and I'm going to now disconnect the.
What is the Alliance for Community Service?
Live feed and the recording.
Have you talked about?
It's something to do with a communication.